All right, we'll get going here in about one minute. All right, let me just check really quick. I see Councilperson Ellis, Councilperson Francie and Maggie at your back, if you'll put your camera on. Hi, thank you. Okay. All right, I think we're ready to get started with part two of the workshop tonight, which is homeless response. Obviously, there's been a lot of feedback from the community over the past several months and beyond, especially over the past several weeks. And council, mayor, city staff recognize that additional work needs to be completed. Chief Schumay gave a really good overview during the council meeting last Wednesday, really timed out what has been done in the current situation. Some of the conversations that have been going on, main goal I think for tonight would be to have council consider creating a committee on homelessness. In the past, there was a committee that predates the majority of us on council, and maybe some of us have participated along the way. It was called an ad hoc committee on homelessness. The term ad hoc itself means temporary, so it's something that starts and then fizzles out. With the ability to create an actual committee, it's something that would be ongoing, which with homeless response, I'm sure I'm safe to say that this is not something that's going to simply go away over the next weeks and months and potentially years. So committee is something that we would be looking at. So I wanted to get council's thoughts on creation of a committee and what that might look like and maybe some priorities for this committee. Councilperson Ellis had put together a really good like overview and synopsis of maybe what this might look like and some of the next steps. So that would be a really good starting point if it's okay to put Councilperson Ellis on the spot. And if you don't have the information handy, I certainly do. But if you wanted to lead it off for us to talk a little bit about that, I think that's a good starting point.
Thank you, Council President. I don't have a printed copy of that in front of me. So I will get my printer printing. So perhaps I can defer to you with the printed copy that you have. But just before that, to say that the need is so huge. Homelessness in the county has been on people's minds for decades. And in the city of Aberdeen, there was a workshop back in 2018 where city council identified homelessness as a top priority. There's been a lot of good people involved, working on the front lines, working behind the scenes, trying to come up with solutions that move us forward. And we seem to have been stuck. And I think part of what this committee would be charged with is really moving the bar forward in a way that we come back with some proposals that are more than just crisis response, but really help to get us to having some good long-term options for our community. I'll turn it back to you, Katie, and I'll start my printer at my end. Thank you.
Perfect. And you know, I have a copy of it right here. So you suggested a timetable, so I'll read through that a little bit, just so everyone can get an idea of maybe what this committee might look like. And then for sure, this is nothing that is set in stone, so it's something that is a starting point to be built off of. So March, April, really normalizing the committee, the members, the purpose, meeting with city staff to get input into actions and staff support and availability, meeting with our navigator, guidance, of course, or legal, meeting with Grace Harbor County, initial feedback from county commissioners, identify short-term actions that can be taken, reach out to various community organizations, church leaders, citizens, meeting with homeless camp members as well as advocates, continue discussions with the county regarding a site, reaching out to cities who are potentially sending people to Aberdeen and working through that challenge as well, supporting, of course, Spring Clean downtown, those types of items. And then into May and June, July, and beyond, really going from there. But the important thing would be to establish some goals and really begin to work towards them and start driving something for homelessness. Are there any comments from council on formation of a committee? Is this something that people agree with? What that might look like?
I definitely. I definitely think we need it.
Yeah, I would like to see it. An advocate for it.
I think we should form a committee then. I don't know that we can take the official action tonight, but I'm hearing that this is something that needs to be created. I believe that there can be up to six council members that can participate. Are there council members that would like to be a part of this committee? I'll say that I definitely would.
I would definitely.
Should we form two committees?
It could be, it could turn out to be a little bit problematic. I think we need to have one committee. Councilperson Joff.
So maybe since it looks like there's interest in the committee, maybe we can, those of us who are interested can email Council President Cashman, and she can come back with a recommendation in our next meeting, and we can try and not have more than one person for each one. If there's that much interest.
And then same thing for a chair person. I think when I originally had thought through this, that it would make sense, because this is such a large issue with so many aspects to it, to have a co-chair, a chair as well as a co-chair, to ensure that we're able to tackle everything. Meetings by, bi-weekly, is that right? Every other week? Every other week would make sense. Okay, so why doesn't everyone that has interest email me? And then we will appoint the committee members the next meeting. Okay, let's talk a little bit about priorities and what council members feel is a priority. And I would invite city staff to share some of their experiences and what they feel might be a priority.
Excuse me, Council President. I had a comment regarding the makeup of the committee. And it seems like the ad hoc committee was made up of staff, there were some staff representatives, there were people, a county commissioner, other people from the public, from the nonprofit sector. And I think it's really important going forward that we maintain that sort of diversity on our working group committee, so that it's not just council members, but it's a true working group that represents all of the different facets and levels of this challenge. And I know as I've been talking to people, many of the folks who were involved in the ad hoc committee from the private and public sector are interested in continuing. And so as we're giving thought to how many people from council, I don't want that to necessarily limit the size of the whole working group so that we can involve a lot of different people going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, and I was also a part of the ad hoc committee that was created back in nineteen. And I will tell you, so there's many stakeholders, of course, are elected. There's a number of department heads, and at some point you may be bringing in other stakeholders. So it's, to a certain extent, it proved beneficial when the county had hired some way to help facilitate them, because there's a lot of information that is flowing from various stakeholders. So I just throw that down as a possibility. Perhaps there is someone internally, one of the electeds who has that ability, but it's the department heads who are stressed, so we are going to be part of the process. But we certainly are going to need someone to step up and take the need to help facilitate such a position.
And then, same too, on the ad hoc, I believe the ad hoc that was formed for Castle wasn't with all of the members. It was specifically for council to report back on issues. I'm not sure if Councilperson Ellis, if we have larger groups?
Well, I'm trying to remember when we started this. I think it was in October or November of last year, we felt we needed to revisit a committee. And I think it involved the original members of the Castle over the ad hoc committee, but like I joined at that time, because I wasn't here on the original one. And Liz joined at that time as well. And then, yeah, because I always thought it's important to get everybody to the table. So we had Naver Works, we had the Housing Authority, we had CAP, we had County Commissioner Pine. And I think there were two or three council members in the RSHA. And we had some really, really good discussions, but that's all we did was we discussed, we didn't get anywhere. And I was starting to feel a bit frustrated with our lack of really making decisions. But we did have some good discussions, and I still think it's important to happen. But that was kind of a new group that got born last fall sometime.
The county physician, I think, is that the ad hoc?
No, so the, again, the group, if you will, the ad hoc meeting that was created, there were county commissioners involved. The county had hired, it was very tough time, because these meetings were only like every other week and not even for a half hour, two hours. And I think he was a former council member from Olympia, but he helped facilitate the meeting. He wrote down, you know, various talking points, and that was beneficial. So I'm just saying that there's someone, the just, the department heads are not going to be able at the time to do that and then pull all that information together and to push this group forward. So it was, in my opinion, money well-strength by the county to bring in a facilitator, that was a paid facilitator. I'm not trying to say pay them, but that was beneficial.
I misunderstood that we're not, I mean, that as a result of that ad hoc committee, that the county hires that mental health professional.
So do we think it's beneficial to talk a little bit about next steps in terms of where the committee should be going? And you know what I mean by that is after Castle closed, everybody moved under the bridge in the DOT area that's there. It's not a sustainable location. It's been definitely a challenge for the police and as much of a challenge for the businesses and community members that are in that area as well. So what are the next steps that the committee should consider with that location? And I will say that there needs to be another location where people can go. I don't know what that looks like. I don't know how it gets funded. I think that's all stuff for the county to consider. But as long as our unhoused are in the downtown corridor, whether they're behind City Hall or on State Street or on any other street, we're going to see the same issue.
I'd like to speak to that. And I guess I would propose that we not rush forward with moving the current camp as an immediate goal, but that the committee takes time to look at what's working and what's not working and what can be done to perhaps facilitate things to work better with the camp where it is now, until we have a real, more permanent place to put, for folks to camp. Moving around is really hard on them, and it's hard on the neighbors. And there's certainly many advantages to where they are now for the time being. And I'd like us to not just jump to that they need to be moved away from that site when there is no site to move them to, but how can we address the concerns around the camp that's under the bridge and the other campsites that are throughout town? And approach it that way.
I absolutely disagree. I'm sorry, I was exposed to an animal today. My allergies are crazy. But that is a priority, because right now where these people are located is devastating, the businesses that are surrounding. They've already lived through this devastation for years, and now we just drop it right back in their lap. It's not fair. We need to find a quick answer for this. I did try to contact the mayor, Marysville, because they do have a different program than we do, and it is working. Longview's not much better. They're actually a little bit worse than Grace Harbor as far as, you know, homeless people. And the goal shouldn't be to find a bigger, better camp. The goal should be to get them off the street. If they have mental illness, we need to find a way to give them treatment and get them off the street. If they're into drug addiction, we need to find a way to get them out of their drug addiction. We need to open doors for them. And if they choose not to get the mental health or the treatment for their drugs, then maybe they need to find another place to go. And that's exactly what Marysville is doing right now. Making a bigger, better camp is not the answer. Home, putting them in a home first isn't the answer. That doesn't work. They destroy properties. I went down by the bridge today just before I came here, and it was, it's awful. It's horrible. It's, no human being should live like that. So our goal should be to get them into a facility for treatment or help.
And I would completely agree with that as a goal, but it's going to take time. I mean, that's been a goal for the last 10 years or so. And it's a lot of big steps in getting the funding for programs in place. I just would advise us to not be in such a rush that we think we know all the answers before we've talked to the people who, such as our navigator, such as the other service providers, that we educate ourselves better about where the gaps are and how best to fill those gaps. And meanwhile, how best to alleviate some of the stress on both the homeless people and the neighboring businesses? And I go by pretty much every week, and I check in with neighboring businesses and with folks in the camp. And I've got a list started of some things that would be helpful. I've got an email to Washington State DOT to find out about what what kinds of options they can offer, given that the legislature approved money for transitioning people from DOT right-of-ways into something more permanent or helpful. I think that we have a lot of firsthand knowledge of members on our council, but there's also many things that we can learn and to approach this with an open mind and an open heart. And to be looking for some real solutions that get us to that goal of getting folks into housing, into treatment, and honoring our business community and our humanity, I guess.
I completely understand what you're saying. And my concern is that there needs to be a sense of urgency and taking things slowly. I don't know that we have the luxury of doing that. I think there has to be some immediate actions that are taken. And at the speed of government, immediate, I put that with a grain of salt. But there has to be that level of urgency, and I think our community needs to know that we are going to move in an exponential manner in this with our next steps.
I certainly agree that urgency and importance, a priority. And yet, if we're not taking steps that are constructive, but make the situation worse, then that doesn't benefit anybody. And I'm not saying we studied this for six months. I think the timeframe that I put together was allowed for a bit of learning from the people who are on the front lines and looking to where we can put pieces of this puzzle together differently so that the situation certainly improves for everybody concerned. But that's really the role of the committee and not of the entire council.
A couple other council members that.
I would just like to respectfully disagree with Councilmember Ellis. I think it's a huge slap in the face to all businesses and citizens that are down in that area where everyone is living now. It's a public safety issue. I have been down there. I cleaned up after these people. There's biohazards, needles everywhere. I've gone and got bits of, you know, feces. They are starting fires. I witnessed a fire myself. You know, these people are on drugs. They are mentally ill. These are not safe people to be around. And at some point, something is going to happen. People are going to get hurt. The city is going to get sued. You know, I don't, to say not to rush it, I don't see why there's any reason why we can't come up with a short-term band-aid, if you will, while we work on a longer-term solution. But doing nothing and just sitting here talking in committees for the next six months, it's not helping the business owners down there. It's not helping the homeless people. It's not helping our city move past.
So a lot of the people down there, I know treatment is available for them. Many of them don't want the treatment. I work in this field. I know that it's available to those who need it. Yes, they just pay for treatment. There's many treatments available out there. Also, I've worked with the homeless, and a lot of them don't want homes. They don't want the responsibility. They don't want to have to pay the bills. They don't want to have to take care of these types of things. So if we just sit here and drag our feet over the situation, it's just going to prolong this. And it's not going to get any better. It will get worse. I mean, thinking of the fact that these people were living in your backyard, you would probably be here at this meeting saying, I'd like them out of my backyard. That's what these business people are saying to us, and we're not doing anything about it right now. It needs to have something done.
Once again, I'm not suggesting six months studying this. I agree, we can probably find some actions that can be taken in the short term, things that address the sanitary conditions. When I talked to the homeless people at the camp, they said, if we knew when the city was coming by to pick up the garbage, we'd have it all picked up and ready for them. But one, we need more garbage cans, and two, we need to know a schedule, and we'll do our part to help. I looked at the Santa can. It was clean. It wasn't filthy. And apparently Public Works has been trying to get another Santa can for them. There's, if there was a quick, easy fix, it would have been done by now. And there isn't one, and there is no place B that folks can be told they have to go. And as well, we have our legal obligations that we have to abide by in terms of where we can tell people to stay and when they have to leave. I just don't want us to simplify this so much that we think. I just don't want us to simplify this so much that we think there's a lot of easy answers. There are many people who don't seek drug or alcohol treatment. One, because they're not an addict. They have mental health problems and they, they're not using drugs. Or they are using drugs and they're not in a place where they're able to think beyond just. Minute by minute, and it may not be very rationally. So. Again, let's work with the folks who understand these, this population. And the diversity among this population. So that the answers we come up with. It's not one size fits all. It's here's a menu of options that are going, some of which will help these people, some of which will help other people. And, and we, we, we look at this comprehensively and not just thinking we can easily. Tell Public Works to go clean up the place and send people packing or our police to arrest everybody. Because it's just not going to happen.
One moment, Director Sanger, I'm going to give Councilwoman Gagen the floor. And also, we have our legal counsel on the line. Hillary Evans. And I know that there were a couple of council members that had submitted some questions to her. For some legal guidance on next steps. So I think it'd be a good idea to bring Hillary into the conversation here shortly as well, so that we can get those. Questions answered prior to committee as well. So.
I, my first two experiences of downtown since elected have been. Scary. In front of the Dr. Building, I was aggressively asked for money repeatedly and boldly by a homeless person until the. Maybe the person that I knew, he didn't want me to go there. I was, I had to, couldn't turn my back then. I couldn't have my phone out, pretend and then take it from me. And from what I see is that it's, there seems to be an absolute lack of respect. Of the law and of fear of punishment. And. Then the next day, this, the similar situation happened, a man was asking for $20. And then every, there was two homeless people on an alleyway. And I was trying to get away from him. He asked them for help to take my money. Help me kill this guy. Help me take this guy's money. And then some other people crossed the stop the idiot. He asked them to take my money. I was absolutely bowling downtown. Just trying to obtain information about the homeless. Warming center from them. Literally identified myself as a councilperson with the door. Keeper within there and he's just following me around, trying to intimidate and harass me the entire time. And he had no fear. He knew that if I called. Chief Schumi's fellows who came in, there's nothing that would happen to him besides being told he could cut it out unless he really crossed the line. But I am still uncomfortable to go down there without. The, the community list we go with our, in, in computer numbers is great. I've been living alone. I'm, I'm afraid. I'm curious if I can ask an officer to go there. But then that kind of defeats the whole purpose of getting a candid conversation with them when you have this uniformed officer there. And it breaks that comfortability a little with them. I was a teenager. I experienced homeless life firsthand in multiple cities, San Francisco, Seattle, yeah, Aberdeen. You, you've probably arrested me before when I was a teenager or a young person. For, for being right downtown, doing what these people are doing. And without fear of punishment. Nothing's going to change. We can, with the meeting, we can ask, we can build them the Taj Mahal. But unless we start holding them accountable for what further behavior, they're never going to do anything. My son. If I do, if I do his chores for him every day, it doesn't make him behave better. He doesn't do his chores without me asking the next day. No, he expects me to do it. And eventually he stops doing them all together. And until I take away his privileges. The behavior never changes. And I go through this over and over and trying to be nice to him. And not just enforce the simple rules that make him cautionary and he can behave that way again. I would love to see us to be able to give Chief Schumi as much power as possible to hold people, to make, make an example of one of the least. That, that is being out of control or causing damage to the building, a business owner. I mean, how can we expect tourists to feel safe if the business owner is on this thing? How can they expect to invite people here or feel confident by here? If there's a good chance that they're going to be harassed. Aggressively from money or followed or potentially assaulted over just because they make eye contact with them. That's all, that was my mistake. I made with each one of these situations is I made, I engaged them from across, from across the way beforehand. And without just setting my blinders on and running away.
I, I think we can all share our personal anecdotes about this all night. All of us have been impacted by this. Our friends have all been impacted by it.
What I'd like to see is an officer 24 hours of that, if we, a vehicle there, just the police presence, it's not even the outside. But that presence alone will slow things down. It'll, it'll. It creates that impression that they're being watched. But as of right now, they have zero fear of, of, well, they might come, they might not. You know, I've done this 10 times and only gotten to the police department once. Next time I'll be able to do it 20 times and they might not hold off.
And that's definitely something that, that needs to be discussed, but if we're going to jump to that, we have to understand the costs. And we have to make sure that we have the staffing for that and probably make adjustments. So it's not something that we can do immediately.
I would like to see the effects that it has having just a close proximity of constant line of sight. On that again.
Okay, so Director Sanger, I know how to comment. If he's still with us, right?
Yeah, just as I, I hear what Liz is saying about talking to the homeless. As somebody that's responsible for the employees that are picking up the garbage, we have reached out. And we have tried so many times to work with them. What we get is FUs. Throw the garbage on the ground in front of us, feces on our garbage cans. Zero input, zero working with us, all resentment, all, and alls we're doing is cleaning up their messes. And I, I see a lot of messages that Public Works isn't doing enough. We're down there three or four times a day, every single day. We have one employee dedicated to this 100% of the time, and that's all they do. So. If you want to give me a huge budget and more employees and staffing, we can build them houses. We can do whatever you want. But it has a cost and it, it has a cost in morale as well. You know, this is not in our, in our maintenance worker's job description. This is something we're asking him to do and it is. So underappreciated by, by the citizens and by the homeless and by the council. I don't think you understand what those guys are going through. But, so I, I just wanted to add a little perspective that. What they're telling Liz is not what I have experienced for the last two years and, and not even close.
So I, I do appreciate the stress that. Working with, working around this homeless. Yes.
Since you've had a couple opportunities to speak, I would like to quickly shift to invite our legal counsel. To weigh in and allow the council to ask legal questions while we have her on the line. There were some questions that were submitted in advance, so I can run through those and certainly. I'm happy to open it up to council as well if they would like to ask Hillary questions about. Next steps or legal authority or anything like that.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks. Hillary, are you with us?
I am here.
All right. So you were given a few questions in advance and I know you prepared some responses on that. Do you want to run through those?
Oh goodness, I can, but I'd have to pull up emails. Hold on for a second. If you want to, if you want to fire questions at me, I'm prepared for that as well. Let me look and see what I've got.
Um, so first one that, that I see on here, that's probably the best, best suited for you. Is it possible to create ordinances to prevent other municipalities from dropping off and unhoused individual and city limits?
Great question. You can draft ordinances to your heart's content, but enforcing them is going to be very difficult. I have not successfully seen any. City. Adopt and enforce an ordinance against a different municipality, unfortunately.
So there was a question, and I haven't read this, so I'm just going to read it right now. The right-of-way map. The right-of-way map the city uses was prepared in response to one of the lawsuits where the judge ruled against the city. This map was created by a former employee and identifies. SF of sidewalks. It must be, is it for footage of sidewalks where homeless people can sleep consistent with code, which is 11:00 p.m. To 6:00 a.m. And many of the sidewalks are not wide enough for a single individual to sleep, let alone a tent and provided for a foot of walkable sideways sidewalk. So the question, I guess, is what would be necessary in order to remain? So that being said, what would be necessary in order to remain in compliance with the court to revise this map? So it doesn't cover such a broad area. And identifies right-of-way where there are wider sidewalks or sidewalks that are not on many walking routes to city services and businesses.
Another excellent question. I got this question sent to me via email earlier today and I've been trying to track down how that map was adopted. So, and, and I was unable to do that today. But depending on how the map is adopted, you could certainly. Revise it. If it was adopted by ordinance, you're going to have to revise it by ordinance. If it's the. If, if it was informally adopted by the police department, say, then you could probably revise it accordingly. The. The, the catch, the trick to it all is what you've already acknowledged, which is. You can revise it, but you still need somewhere substantive, a, a large area of land for them to go to. You cannot. Revise the map to exclude people, which I hear is not the intent at all. But. If you're going to take away 1,000 square feet, you might want to think about adding the equivalent amount somewhere else.
And then. What is legally required by staff when cleaning or removing personal property from the right-of-way or other private property?
So this is a very gray area of the law and I don't usually like to opine. About stuff like this in an open public forum for fear of litigation that would ensue. But I will say this. Oh, you know what I will say is my computer's about to die. I need to plug it in. Give me two seconds. I'm, I'm going to turn off video and I'm going to keep talking while I plug my computer in. So essentially. The one die. Sorry about that. Trying to turn my camera back, but it's not working. And so I'll just start talking until the, until the camera works. And. It's so.
Camera's on.
Is it working? Okay, I can't see myself, so I'll just trust you. Districts have different policies and it is the purview of the council if you would like to adopt policies relating to that. Generally what I see, and I don't believe the police department, I, I spoke to your chief earlier, I emailed your chief earlier today about this question. I don't think you've adopted formal policies on, hey. You know, if you find someone camping. Camping. How many days notice you give them, what kind of property you retain, what kind of property you discard? How long you would store personal property that appears to be of value. And, and you know, I've worked with different municipalities who adopt different policies on that. The council can do it or the police department can do it internally, depending on who wants to address the problem. But I've seen, for instance, cities adopt certain policies that look something like this. When we contact a camper, we will give them 24 hours notice that they're camping in a. Public right-of-way or a public park and they're not permitted to camp there. We will then come back 24 hours later. We will offer them a bed if one is available. If one is available and they refuse to move, we will do X, Y, and Z with their belongings. And that includes. Taking them to storage facilities, disposing of them. And policies relating to the disposal of personal property is very difficult because what is of value to the camper. Is not always discernible. So documenting what is there. Is always important because one man's trash is another man's treasure. And as you've noted, a lot of these campers seem to have a lot of things that people would normally consider garbage. There's, there's other hazards involved, right? Syringes, needles. So all this has to be done with a great deal of care. But you can draft a policy that says, you know, we'll contact you and give you 24 hours to leave. If you don't leave, we'll contact you again. We'll give you the opportunity to bed if one is available. If one is available and you choose not to go there, you know, insert bus voucher, cab voucher, transportation here. We will. You know, notice your property and/or take it on the spot. We'll hold it for 10 days, 60 days. Jurisdictions vary greatly on what they tend to do. And, and dispose of anything that's hazardous and/or not of value. Photograph, document, write it all down. And that seems to work. The problem that we have in Aberdeen is that we do not have that secondary place. And as we all know, you can't ask them to leave. You don't have somewhere for them to go. So that seems to be the stumbling block that we're facing.
Absolutely. Just talking about limitations, there were a couple of questions about, like, can the city numb? Limit the number or location of social services, drug treatment, needle exchange, medical clinics, food or clothing banks? And then within needle exchanges themselves, is there any way that the city can limit? Like the number that can be exchanged, items distributed, those types of things?
This is really getting into the weeds. A lot of these facilities are, are essentially considered essential public facilities that can't be. Zoned away or prohibited because they do serve a public purpose. So that's something that I think. It would really benefit. You know, city, city planning staff and the committee getting together and talking about what exactly we're trying to accomplish. There's so many rules and regulations and constitutional protections about dealing with these facilities. That it's going to be a very in-depth dive and not, not something we should talk about in the context of a, an open public meeting like this.
I think that gets through most, if not all of the questions that I was privy to in advance. I will open up to the council throughout that or before you had any questions for legal.
If a citizen is harmed or assaulted in the city of Aberdeen by one of the mentally ill or drug addicts murdering or any one of these. Campers, is the city responsible for the safety of, for the welfare of the people going to be indicted or armed by one of these people?
It's incredibly hard to say and. It's so fact-dependent. There's always, so. I wish I had a snappy phrase for this, but I, what I, what I feel like I say day after day after day is. Just because there's not liability doesn't mean we won't get sued. So yes, the city can and will absolutely get sued for something like that. Whether or not we're actually responsible for that is a different. Different analysis altogether.
Director Sanger?
Boop, muted.
Better?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to follow up with Hillary. Do, we do have criteria on stuff that's found in the right-of-way. On what is, what is savable and not savable. And we do have a storage facility for that. We bought a. Box car basically, and we bag it up and we store it for three months with name or location. So that if it is somebody's and they, they say that it's their private possessions, they can retrieve it. So we do have a project. So that if it is somebody's and they they say that it's their private possessions, they can retrieve it. So we do have a process in place to do that.
Wonderful. And I think maybe the key then is to make that consistent across departments because I know that different departments are responsible for picking things up at different times and and dealing with campers in different circumstances.
Are there any other questions from council? Oh, Councilperson Alice.
Thank you. Um, Hillary, the question about the map, I think the map was created in response to one of the lawsuits that the city went through. And it was required by a federal judge. So does that mean that that map is kind of embedded in the 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 court case? And in order to change that map, we would have to get a judge to sign off on it?
Likely not. I mean, you could be challenged probably. My hunch, and I need to, like I said, I only got these questions uh, late last night, so I've only had today to work on them. But I'd like to do some research on that, figure out how it was adopted, the process through which it was adopted, and figure out how we can alter or amend it. Like I said earlier, my hunch is that if we trade like for like, you know, if you were to give, if they have a square acre right here and it's downtown and you give them a square acre, five blocks to the west or the east or the that, um, while we may be challenged, I think that's very defensible. So we just need to think about the process of how to do that and make sure that they're getting something that is equivalent to what they have now, if not more.
I don't believe that that map was ever adopted by council.
Right.
Just real quick, I want to add to what Liz said. What it was in response to is in order for the city to be able to close the River Street property down, we have to be able to prove that we had space or are homeless to go to. And that map was produced in response to that requirement.
Yeah, that makes sense. And so amending it is essentially gonna have to take the form of whatever it was, the function of whatever it was adopted. If it was just informally drafted, we can informally change it. If it was a public process, we're gonna have to use that same process. So I'll I'll get into the weeds about that and and figure out the the process moving forward. And again, I apologize for being late and leaving early. Um, please feel free to email me. I know that this is a a topic that everyone wants to have a lot of conversation about, and I'm happy to have those conversations. So I'm not trying to give you short shrift tonight.
No, Hillary, thank you. I think I've not seen any other council members with questions. Liz, do you have one more question for Hillary?
Yeah.
I usually see council members with questions. But do you have a hard stop time?
Because I kind of have to go now, but I can answer one more question. I prefer email, honestly. Um, especially things, uh, I'm always very leery to talk about potential liability in uh, open public meetings. And I prefer to go into executive session or have emails one on one with council members. But Liz, if you've got a quick, Councilmember Alice, if you have a quick question, I'm happy to answer it before I go.
Let's do this, Councilperson Alice. Why don't we send the remainder of the questions through to Director Scott? And then that one of anybody that has a thought after council and wants to get something over also, she can collect and then they can be given back to council.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Apologies and have a good night, everyone.
Okay, thanks, Hillary.
Bye.
All right, I will, let's see, we we've pretty much gone through council comment. I think that we are all in agreement that a committee needs to be formed. I think if anyone has any parting comments for the committee on goals or true next steps, then I would invite anyone to share those. And other than that, I think we're close to being done here. Councilperson Shaw?
Um, I, we we've got the, you know, the immediate situation, you know, our committee's gonna be working on future steps. But just one quick recollection of the one that I'll do is, yes, we developed that map to settle the lawsuit. But then we also committed to, because we didn't want to commit to having to build, own, and operate a shelter. That's when we developed the TASSL, the Temporary Alternative Shelter Location, because we had high hopes that we would have access to, um, state and federal funds through the county. So we need to, I think, remember that the, even our own attorneys said our stumbling block is that we don't have somewhere for them to go. And I know that, um, that's not a favorite alternative, but I do know that and and we were, we surprisingly at the time, got surprised by the unwillingness of others in the county to partner with us on this issue. And that was a disappointment, but I think there's been some movement and that we ought to keep that in mind. But I think we need to swallow hard and realize that if we don't want to pay for this ourselves, we have to come up with a solution that makes us eligible for the funding that is available, and one of those is is a shelter. And what that looks like, I don't know, but I know that there are some people out there. Um, I was at a meeting and Cap has a proposal. It's not something that is a slam dunk home run, but it's certainly a starting point. And I hope the committee would look at that. Um, location, of course, is everything, location, 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 but the building blocks. And when it comes to people who know how to manage programs and get money and work with the, um, the, um, people who are challenged in poverty and everything. That is, that is an agency that has indicated the willingness to step up and partner with us. Whereas, um, as we've all gotten more smarter, and so now in terms of next steps over the way, we do have some experts on the current situations. And I was wondering, is there anything that our police chief or our community development director need this council to do at the next meeting or immediately? That would help you manage the situation as it currently exists?
Thank you, Councilmember Shaw. So I I guess I certainly appreciate all the information that was provided today and uh, reference Councilmember Paris Lee and with mental health. And hopefully you may remember when our police navigator came on board and provided her presentation, there are significant challenges for our citizens in this community as it relates to trying to get them in to mental health counseling. But a positive for our city is we do have one more and we have hired her on, and so that is a good thing. Um, and then, uh, Councilmember, again, I appreciate your information with respect to police presence. Uh, but I just, I'll just make mention again, it just being, um, the the amount of activity for staff has been off the charts. Uh, number one, so having officers just assigned to that location would be extremely difficult. As while homeless is certainly one of those areas that we want to try to provide more input. I mean, we unfortunately are dealing with burglaries and robberies and many other things that obviously are a priority for our citizens. And then with respect to, you know, making making an example, and I completely understand and agree, but our jail is at capacity. So there are certainly some challenges that I'm looking forward to having a pretty discussion with the city council and the committee on this and form of this. So I would just say I'm looking forward to be a part of the the solution. But it's pretty apparent, we have varying degrees of thoughts from council members, and I would just reiterate. I think it would be advantageous that the committee entertain having an outside facilitator uh, to try and help move this process along in a timely fashion, because I agree with any of the others. I, there should be some short-term goals, some long-term goals, but those short-term goals need to be sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Um, I can't speak for all the staff, but we do not have staff nor the 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 capacity nor the skills to deal with this complex situation. Um, we need help. Um, I I don't know what that looks like. And that's gonna be nice to have the committee together, um, to to figure out what what maybe some plausible solutions could be. I I don't know if it's hiring a coordinator or starting with the facilitator as the chief mentioned. I don't know what that looks like. But I know between community development, public works, the police department, we're tapped. We're literally behind on projects and more so lately with police and and public works because they're the immediate responders. Um, and I don't, we don't have any solutions. We're just not equipped to deal with this situation. And and I don't know what that looks like or what it's gonna take. Um, we want to be, you know, at the table and part of that solution. But I'm not sure we can take charge and lead in that. We just don't have the ability to do that at this point. Um, so I'm I'm, I know this is an immediate situation for a lot of council people, and we really appreciate that. We we need help. We need some solutions that can work. And we're gonna look forward to getting the community committees started and then, you know, starting that process. And then also, um, reaching back out to some of the organizations as we move forward. But in the past, we've met with resistance. I mean, they look at us and say, well, it's your problem. You deal with it. And maybe some of that's changing now, but we felt we've felt the staff that we're just left here to deal with the situation and we don't know what to do with. And I don't know what the answer is, but we definitely want to be part of the solution and be at the table. I I just don't have a good answer to that.
Any other comments from the council? I know, um, I'll say, um, please as a takeaway, email me if you're interested in being on the committee. And I hope that anybody that does want to serve will come into this with an open mind and slate so that we can really look through some of the options and understand too that there, just as we heard from Hillary, that there's so many legal boundaries that we have to play within as well. So I I don't think that the next steps is going to be as simple, and it's probably not going to be something that any of us would personally choose um, to do, but we we definitely have to do something that's in the best interest of the citizens and our community. So, um, please email email me, um, since I understand we're gonna lose almost two weeks, um, to solidify this committee. Um, I will go ahead and get something on the calendar and talk to the mayor about how we can get somebody in to to help facilitate um, our our first meeting so that we have that immediately to follow.
And please, if you could, if you've come up away with any questions that you'd like forwarded to legal counsel, if you can get those to me by Friday. I know that, um, Bill Seedorf and myself will be meeting with legal counsel next week. And so we can go over some of those questions as well and get those responses back out prior to the meeting. So please feel free to email email me.
All right. Well, I I think that we'll adjourn for the meeting.